It is three o'clock, so I will go ahead and call this meeting in order. If you will join us for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Our allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anybody that wants to address the board, their sign up sheets in the back, if you fill that out and hand it to one of these two gentlemen at the end, they'll take it from you. And also, if anybody has one of these, oops, I dropped mine on the floor, it'll break. Please turn it to silence, so we don't have too much training. Thank you. Okay, I will call the roll. We've got our district attorney, Tony Piers, here. Supervisor Tingle is here, supervisor Banks, supervisor Feinberg, supervisor Guy, and supervisor Clarity are here. Our district manager, Chris Schumaker, is here. And our CPA, who's seven, I'm seven, Trent, in the mark, Stephen Blum is here. And with that, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, we do. We have one speaker card, and it's Richard Macci, Lakeland Circle. And he is back to speak about Macci law courts.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
Hello.
Rich Macci, I live in Silver Lakes, and I represent the Silver Lakes Macci League. And we'd like to know what's happening with the Macci courts that were supposedly built and is going on, I guess, a couple of years now.
I can answer. The only thing we've done is got pricing and got confirmation that we can get the money reimbursed.
Any timeline?
Impact these. Like, if you not have a timeline, we were kind of mired in a location to put them. First, we looked over at the park across the street, and there were a few other suggestions that pulled, so we just haven't made a final decision.
Can I make it for you?
But in Silver Lakes?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be nice. I don't think the association will appreciate it, though. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We'll see you again.
And you had the suggestion?
Just, oh, I got my snow group coming back, and they're dying to play Macci.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
That brings us to staff reports. And I think since we have people here regarding the roundabout on Gateway Boulevard and Commerce Lakes Drive, with the board's agreement, we should probably start with that, so that individual can leave.
Well, good afternoon. I guess that's me.
That's you.
For the record, my name is Tyler Wainwright. I'm with Tetra Tech. I'm your district engineer. So, we're talking about roundabouts today, specifically the roundabout Lee County DOT is proposing at the intersection of Gateway Boulevard and Commerce Lakes Drive. There are some graphics that the county's engineers prepared that we'd like to show you real quick, just so you guys get an idea of what we're talking about here. There you go. Okay, so, this is very loud now, but it's redone, by the way. Not yelling, listening.
Feedback?
Yeah, so, here's what we're doing. Okay, not we, county, I guess we also. There has been a number of accidents at that intersection, and county DOT is looking to do some safety improvements. That safety improvement that is proposed is installing this roundabout. So as you can see here, it's going to change the layout of this intersection. So there's a couple of things that I guess we need to talk about and sort of get some discussion going with the board on what the plan to move forward here is. Just for some background, we, we being myself and Chris and Kenny, met with the county last week at their office to discuss some particulars involving utilities and drainage and streetlights and signs and a whole bunch of stuff going on here. So, like we had talked about before, part of this right of way that is, this being overlaid here is owned by the county, and part of the right of way is owned by Gateway. The portion that's posed by Gateway right now is the eastern approach. Basically, if you can imagine that north-south red line just running straight, that portion going to the right there is owned by Gateway. You guys just acquired that from WCI when Gateway and WCI turned their roads over to the county. There were some roads that the county was not willing to take at the time, and some of those WCI roads got conveyed to Gateway instead of just being maintained by nobody. So that's how you guys ended up with it. So, your piece that you own is about, I don't know, thousand feet roughly long, and it goes to the end of the, what's the cherry there, Love a Child or something like that? Basically goes to the end of that property next to Dana's Preserve. So that's your property. So, the things to think about and discuss and consider here are how or if or when would Gateway like to do anything with that right of way? The county is looking to acquire it in some manner so that they can construct the roundabout. If I say anything contrary to what the county's proposing to do, there's also two members from LCDOT here in the audience today, should you like to ask them any questions, and they can clarify something wrong than I say. But the county's looking to acquire at least a portion or possibly all of that right of way from Gateway to construct the roundabout. There are some items that are going to be needed to either be relocated or improved underneath the road. We're talking about utilities. We have a couple of force mains, a couple of water mains, a couple of irrigation mains that are going to need to be encased most likely. We're probably not going to relocate them because it's really not room to do that, so we're probably going to need to encase those mains. And then, there's items to think about like signage and lighting. Things to think about there is basically from our previous discussion that the county would commit to putting in basically the standard base level signs and street lighting. And then, should Gateway want something better than that to match the rest of the community, like the decorative signs, the decorative light posts, those would still be Gateways to maintain and I guess install also. But if you want to go with the county standard base level, then it would be theirs to install and maintain. So, with all of that in mind, I guess the purpose of today is to get some thoughts from the board on how you would like to proceed. The plan, or one possible plan to construct all of this is that Gateway and LCDOT would enter into a joint project agreement of some kind to do this work, so that all the construction for all of that happens all at once and not Gateway's got a contract going at one time and then the county's got a contract going at one time. So there's some conveyance to talk about, there's some project agreements to talk about, all kinds of stuff. So with that, I will now stop talking.
Mr. Clarity, go ahead.
Thank you. On Commerce Lakes Drive, the part they want to take has sidewalks on it. Are they going to relocate those sidewalks?
A portion of them are going to be realigned, I guess, yes.
Okay, because it is part of the walkway that's there, and...
The white is sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am. So, on the picture there, the white stuff on the side, those are the proposed sidewalks, and then the, you know, the rest of it, obviously you can see the road and the green space. But the white portion there, that's the proposed sidewalks that they're constructing.
Okay, but it's not all the ways down Commerce Lakes?
No, ma'am, just the part that they're realigning. So the rest of Commerce Lakes would stay as is.
Okay, because the red line goes down and crosses over the sidewalks down farther. Stay in front of Love a Child as you go down, you can see the white entrance. I'm pointing to my nap, and you can't see what I'm pointing.
No, I, I'm following you.
There's a bike lane coming back into the road.
The, is it bike lane? Are you talking about the red dash line?
Yes.
So the red dash line is representing the right of way lines? That's the boundary of the road parcel?
Mm-hmm.
So, the, where they're proposing to stop work, I'm going to walk over here. They're basically going to stop right here with their improvements. So these red lines, that's just where the right of way line is right now.
Right, right in front of that red line are sidewalks.
Right here?
Yeah, no, right of the red line.
Other side?
Yeah.
Well, the red line should be on the backside of the sidewalk. That would help. That is just a...
Do you don't mind pointing?
Okay.
So these are pointed there.
Okay. Okay, these are sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am.
The road is going over those sidewalks, so...
No, ma'am.
It's not.
Nope. So this, this part right here, this is, this is what the road that they're building is, right here. And then this, they're just realigning this driveway right here into that business. But the, the road improvements are right here. Just this, the colored part right here.
Okay, and so the sidewalks, right, are still going to be here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They're not widening the road to the red lines.
All right, well, that's what I thought they were doing. That's what he said was...
Did you have any...
No, that was it. I wanted to make sure he removed their sidewalks.
Okay. Mr. Tingle?
Yeah, couple things. I'm assuming that what we discuss here today is going to be equally applicable to the Griffin intersection?
Sort of. So, my apologies, I should have explained the rest of the plan here. So, there's two proposed roundabout improvements. This one, which is in the next 12-ish months, and then the next one after that is the Griffin and Gateway Boulevard improvements, and that one will follow in, what, a year and a half roughly?
We plan on starting this one, we're hoping to start this one around May, April of 2020. The Griffin one will follow in 2021, same time frame.
Do we have, and I was hoping we were going to have this to talk about, do we have an overlay of this that shows all of our utilities that are impacted by this? We know that we've got a coming, coming out of B2, a six inch and a 12 inch that goes due west and then crosses over. We've got sanitary sewers feeding that same pump station that comes from east, west, north, and south. And then we have potable water that goes god only knows where, and we've got irrigation mains that are in there. Is the encasement only where we have pavement, or is the encasement the full right of way?
Just pavement. My understanding would be just pavement. That's how the...
So we would come out, for example, we'd come out of B2, just get this feeling right here, we'd come out of B2, go due west, we would be open cut to essentially the sidewalk, encased clear across to the backside of the sidewalk on the other side, come out, turn 90 degrees with a six and a 12, go up to the white line again, encase all the way up to the white line.
Is it roadway or sidewalk? I thought it was roadway itself.
Is it road only? Sidewalks, don't worry, don't worry, okay.
Correct, just travel.
Yeah, yeah, so if you have a break in there, the water spill out on the side, outside the pavement, a hole occur outside the pavement, traffic illegal, continue flowing through that intersection while you make the repair on the line, whether you got to slide a new main to that encasement or not.
In lieu of all that, from up north, we don't do it this way. It's called insurance. Would an insurance policy cover this to avoid this massive amount of thousands of dollars we're going to spend on this relocation? That would cover both your pavement, the landscaping, street signs, street lights, and everything that's in the right of way, should there be a catastrophic break?
Well, we really wouldn't need any insurance because Gateway, if there was a break out in the road and the road's closed down, Gateway would be responsible for making that repair on the main and repairing any damage to the roadway that's above it. So that would be a responsibility at that time, we wouldn't be looking for any insurance. Our policy's typically to encase everything under the road so that the road doesn't get affected, so our traveling public, our residents and so forth can continue using the road while we make that repair. So that's one of the things my boss, Randy Searchy, has said, you know, put together your conflicts, we'll sit down with you and see where it makes sense. I've been told there's some valves that don't work. It's very hard to encase around a valve, so...
That's where I was going, is go with valves next.
We would look at that and see how you could do that, if you can do it, if you can't, does it make sense to do something, or is it better to leave it in as is? So we're going to sit down with your...
Because we have valves, we have air release valves also. And then, we have manholes. What do you do with manhole?
Manholes can be adjusted, just like if you came from up north and you know manholes are in the road everywhere.
Make them degrade.
So you bake them to gray, and we'll have a small bump there, because there's always a little bump on a manhole, not too bad usually, but we will work with your engineer, once you look at all those conflicts, we'll sit down and work through those to try to reduce the cost as much as we can to the Gateway services, but get a product that's going to protect, protect the traveling public and your, and your utility users, of course.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, this is, doesn't show enough detail as far as I'm concerned for a plan, do you see the utilities and how they would or how they may be relocated?
We, we do, we do have that sheet which we can forward to you, but it really doesn't show up up there. If you put it up there, you really, you'll see the lines, when you, if you're sitting right next to each, you can kind of point it out.
Yeah, it's difficult to tell on this here, okay.
But I guess the main thing, I, by the way, I'm David Murphy, I'm the deputy director for Lee County DOT, I've got Alex DeWey with me, he's my project manager for the project, he's running it for us. The two big things that Tyler touched on that we're looking for is one, that right of way, what would, what was, what would Gateway want to do with that right of way? It's your right of way. Do you want to relinquish that right of way? And we do, we could do an amendment to the original agreement and turn that, turn that over to Lee County, and we would maintain it the same way we're maintaining Gateway and Griffin and the other part of Commerce. That's one option. The second option is you give us an easement in that area, we'll build the road, maintain what's, what we build, and maintain that forever, and then you maintain the rest. So we're willing to take over the whole road if you, if you don't want it. We'll take, take that off your hands and, and build, build that section and maintain the area to the end, so you're not left with a fragment at the end. And the third option would be that you would just give us a permit, which means we'll build the roundabout, and then you would maintain that road from that red line east forever. And then, of course, we'd work with you between the, between the two, whether you're paving and paving marking. So it's up to, it's up to the board. I think that the best alternative for you would be to turn it over to us, so we would take on that liability in the future of having to maintain that road. But it's totally up to what the board decides on that. We're, we're willing to do any of those, those three, but...
Mr. Guy, did you have a comment, question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Sherman. Am I correct that these white lines here are sidewalks of some kind or another?
Sidewalks shared use, and then the...
Are they elevated?
Are they elevated?
Are they going to be elevated?
No, the sidewalks are going to be at grade with the ground around it. The crosswalks is, they're also going to be at grade because you don't want to have speed bumps going into the roundabout. The curves that, the angles that you're coming in are what slows people down in a roundabout. So you can see how the, when you come in, you're coming in and they're curving you, that's, that slows you down. There'll be signs up saying this is the speed you should be going. So the, the crosswalks will not be elevated. All the dual lanes, where you see two lanes going over a crosswalk, those are going to have the rapid flashing beacons. So pedestrian comes up to it, they'll hit the button, it'll start flashing, hopefully, you know, make sure that people stop and then you can cross the double lane. The single lane, where there's only one lane that you're crossing, traffic, that will just have the crosswalk.
Well, these are very strange looking crosswalks, but have you, are you sure that ADA is going to be happy with these things?
They will meet ADA compliance. We're required to do that. So we're required, under federal law, to make these ADA accessible.
They certainly look strange to me.
They do, they do it from the plan view. It's more that you go across the lane, so you're kind of looking at one, then you, we send you over, and then you're looking, then you can concentrate on the other traffic coming, because you're only crossing one, one-way traffic at a time.
Well, they make it this way to queue people, because they make it for a queue, because you can get out there in that middle, and if it went straight across, there'd be no place for five people to stand, they'd be in the road. So they make those little angles to where five or six people can wait till the light changes to going across the other lane. That's why there are those angle deals. Whole more volume.
Indeed. I thought the gentleman just said that we were going to have continuous traffic. I didn't know that we were going to have a light.
It says cross at your own risk. It says cross at your own risk.
It's a rapid flashing beacon. It's just a, it's just a flashing light that goes on. We have it at Matlissay, there's a number of places we have it, down on Fort Myers Beach, you hit a button, it turns on the light, and it just flashes and says there's a pedestrian crossing, so as a driver, you see, God, there's a yellow flashing light on me, there's a guy standing there, it's a crosswalk, state law, federal law says, hey, I need to stop? So when you, when they stop, then you proceed across, because some people don't watch, so...
Okay, so, so you're telling, are you, are you telling me that, that the traffic through the circle is going to be continuous, or is it going to be stop and go depending on whether there's pedestrian traffic?
Well, crosswalks are set outside the roundabout, so you'll be stopping after it, and the ones that, when you come through the roundabout to the crosswalk, there's enough for one to two cars storage, so you're not impacting the roundabout. So one or two cars can stop when pedestrians are crossing, then they continue on through. So it's, we're going to function as a normal roundabout. People coming into the roundabout yield to the traffic inside the roundabout, so the roundabout, if you're inside the roundabout, you have the right of way. And then, as you look to your left, if it's clear, you go. It's a yield sign. If there's someone, a person crossing in front of you, a pedestrian, you stop to let him go. So that's how, that's how it functions.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I want to make sure that we, as a board, fully understand some of the history, if, if, you know, not everyone is, is clear on this. So, when, before the decision is made on a solution, whether it's a light versus this roundabout, can you just tell us some of those points of consideration and what were some of the data that was collected as far as either traffic studies or, or whatever? And once you give us that information, just high level description of what's the value that this roundabout brings us in accordance to our community and the, the traffic that you assessed to, to make a determination on whether a roundabout or a light, how this benefits our community as opposed to an alternate solution?
What's transpired is, you know, back in 2017, Lee County took over Gateway, Griffin, and one partial, portion of Commerce back in 2017. At that time, we had some complaints, and we just took it over, and we did an analysis of it, and neither intersection warranted traffic signals or a roundabout.
And what makes, and how, how did you determine that information, and when was that information calculated?
There's about seven warrants for a signal. In this case, the warrants that were met were crashes. So after, I think it was six months to nine months, we looked at it again, looked back at the accidents, and there were quite a few, and our traffic engineer, Steve Jensen, looked at it and said, these two intersections now meet warrants for a signal. So at that point, when something meets warrants for a signal, we look at it and do what's called an ICE. It's an intersection study. So we looked at it for a signal, and we looked at it for a roundabout. When we did that, we found that the roundabout was, was a better solution for this intersection for two main factors. One, the type of crashes that would occur in a roundabout compared to a signal. A signal doesn't reduce accidents at a intersection. In fact, typically, when you put a signal in, accidents go up. They're different accidents. You still have death set traffic signals and people running red lights. Happened last week on 41 in Lee County, one lady was T-boned. So the accidents actually go up a little bit with a signal, but you get more rear-end accidents, people stopping and not stopping, rear-ending, a couple, sometimes T-bones, people getting hit. So the accidents are the same, you don't have as, you don't have as severe as accidents typically with signals. They still occur, but not as frequently as one without a signal. Now, a roundabout, all the, the way the roundabout's designed, all the accidents that occur are angle crashes. So you're coming in, you're headed, basically heading in the same direction as the traffic, the car that you run into. You didn't yield to it, someone didn't yield, and you run into it. So the accidents aren't necessarily less or more, but they're less severe, so you have less personal injury caused. We just looked at this intersection for the last 12 months. We had 12 personal injury accidents in the last 12 months at this intersection. So it's still, we're still having accidents, it's still safety concern. So what we did is, once we looked at it, we said, how does this, how does Commerce and Griffin rate with all the other intersections in the community that we're looking at doing improvements on? Because usually you come in at the bottom of the list and you'd be five, six, seven years before we actually get to the intersection. The accidents at these intersections rated higher than the other intersections we had on our list, hence it went to the top of the list. And that's why last year, we, we were able to program the design for both roundabouts, and then we went, looked at our CIP, and we actually programmed the roundabout for this next, next construction season, which starts in October, is our next fiscal year. We want to start after season, and obviously it took time to get the design and so forth. So we've programmed this roundabout to start in April. So this program's been accelerated tremendously through our program. It may seem like it's taken a long time, but this is extremely fast to get out, one to get on the list, and then moved right to the top.
Okay, and I have just one quick follow-up question. So, if, this solution is to reduce crashes, or at least the severity of those crashes? And I'm, I'm a fan of continuous flow, but my concern is, are there other unintended consequences as a result of this solution? When you look at the amount of traffic that we have certain times of the day, it can back up at the placement of this. So, did, did you look at the roundabout, the current flow, especially going from two lanes to one at, at particular sections? Do you anticipate this roundabout not impacting or driving efficiency as far as continuous flow as opposed to a light? Are we going to have a backup? We may have less, less severe crashes, but we have flow issues as a result?
Well, that's a great question, because I asked our traffic engineer that same question about the intersection, and what he told me is that this, this roundabout will function the same, if not a little better, than a trap, than a traffic signal at high peak, at peak volume. So during peak volume, you're going to have the same delay at a, at a signal as you would in this roundabout. But off-peak, you're going to have less delay, because then it's going to function more continuously, because with less traffic, you come into the intersection, you keep flowing when no one's there, and you have, you may have to stop for one or two cars, and you proceed into the gap. So off-peak, it's going to function a lot better than a signal, you'd have a lot more wait time during off-peak times with a signal, unless you obviously hit the green. But, and we looked at that, you know, some people get green and won't have a wait, and you look at the people that have to wait.
And that, and that is based on recent data pools of, of our, our traffic behaviors?
And also, we projected that out 20 years from now. So we looked at it for 20 years in advance, saying, how is it going to function? And that, those are the results of that, of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, got the questions. When we met on the 30% design, I indicated, I had a question about the traffic studies, and they indicated that they were done several years ago. For example, Commerce Lakes Drive coming from the west proceeding east, a couple of years ago, there was not that big demand to turn left, and that is the majority. If you go down there early in the morning or late in the afternoon, the majority of the traffic is trying to turn left. And what we've done by narrowing that lane to a single lane and people turning left, they're going to be more subject to a queue forming behind them to be able to merge than people that would be turning right that would just go right on around the corner.
Well, there's, there's almost 1,600 employees going to that one.
And, and, well, what we were told was...
Going to just in that one corner.
Yeah, what we were told was that there would be another study, traffic study, just to make sure that the taking out of that extra lane to that intersection would be looked at, and it doesn't look like, either they didn't do it, or they did it and said it wasn't that big of a deal.
We, we did the study. We, we went out there, we did recounts, we looked at the projections from the future business growth in the, in Lee County in this area, and when we did the analysis of the flow of the roundabout, the, the right turn, that right lane, single lane, still functioned at a very high level.
Yeah, right lane, the people turning right don't bother me, it's the ones turning left.
Because they got to cross both lanes.
Sorry, my name is Alex Levy. When we did the count again, the, the numbers actually went down.
Damn.
Yeah, from the previous...
Well, when you go out there and look at it in the morning and in the afternoon, everybody's turning left.
Well, that's, that's because the work that was being done on 82, I'm sure you all experienced it, you've got additional traffic coming through Gateway and Griffin and those, Commerce with 82's construction. So, we looked at it when that construction was going on, what Alex is saying, now we looked at it again, the, the traffic counts today went down from during the 82 construction. We still looked at the, the expansion and the growth that's to be occurred in the business park for Jetport and the area down there to make sure that this is still going to function, because we didn't, we don't want to install this roundabout and have to come back and modify or change it in the near, in the next 20 years. So we want, we had our, Cardenas, our engineering firm, they looked at it, looked at, we gave them the projections from community development, and all that could happen out there, and we ran the numbers, and it still functions very well.
The next question I got is the northbound lane coming in front of the Italian restaurant, and I, I can't tell if it's because of the trees or what, but that line, the, the paving doesn't look like it merges with the other pavement. The, and/or there is a deceleration lane. What is that there? It looks like it's three lanes wide instead of two.
On Gateway or on...
On Gateway Boulevard, northbound.
Yeah, it, it blends into the two lanes that are going north. It's just hard to see because of the trees.
I know, that's dark.
And this is depiction, so it's, it's not perfect.
Okay. Then the last one was going eastbound on Commerce Lakes Drive. Okay. Then the last one was going eastbound on Commerce Lakes Drive. It looks like there's either a deceleration lane or a right-hand turn lane into the, uh, commercial park, but it stops in the grass, or unless the picture, you just can't see the pavement.
I'm sorry, there's an existing, there's an existing right turn lane already there.
I'm sorry.
There's an existing right turn lane.
It's there, there right now? Okay, so it's merging.
Right, that's gonna join up with the existing right turn.
The tree has a cover on it, I can't see it.
Over here, oh yeah, that just belongs right there.
Yeah, that's an existing.
So it's, it's a right-hand turn. Yes, that's all I have.
Mrs. Flares? She'd ask me.
Yeah.
Will you go to Mr. Banks first?
I just wanted to know if there's gonna be any speed bumps before they hit this roundabout, or it's just gonna be the signage?
It's just a signage. There's no speed bumps. It's the curve coming into the roundabout that slows you down. So they really don't want you, you don't go, you don't wanna put somebody into a curve and then give them a speed bump to go over.
I just, I just didn't know if there was something like ahead of the-
No, there's no, there's no speed bumps, no raised crosswalks, nothing like that in their design.
Good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, can you tell me from beginning to end how long the construction's gonna take?
It'll be, it'll maybe take me six months or whatever. Yeah, we're, we're not at the point to determine the construction schedule for it. Um, it's gonna, we're, 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 I believe it's gonna take probably a year.
A year, I see.
And that's a rough guess until we get all the numbers done, and our engineer basically, he's done roundabouts before, actually tells us what.
How many roundabouts have you done? I know there's one there on Metro and Crystal.
Yeah, we've done about, I think we've only done three. We've got these two in design. We also are working on a Buckingham Gunnery, um, roundabout with the state. Uh, we just started the design. Uh, we have, we're approving the, the contract for the design in the next month or two.
Can you, um, can-
Yeah, Littleton, Kismen, oh, it's actually Little- Littleton at Corbett is, uh, been bid out. That's gonna be another roundabout that's going in.
Can you get us some additional sheriff's time, uh, either during and after, uh, the instruction that to help our residents negotiate this thing smoothly?
Um, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
I'm not some, you know, some enforcement, some, some sheriff deputies to help us. No? I'm not making you myself clear?
No, I, I'm, I'm trying to think of how, how that would be handled. Typically, in our road construction projects, the sheriff's department will come out and patrol, make sure people are abiding by the M L T, the, uh, maintenance of traffic, traffic control that's set up, so there aren't any issues that way. Um, I can't say, I, I can't speak for the sheriff's department. Uh, they-
Well, I figured you Lee County folks, we're all in it together.
You know, I get, I get a lot of calls and people saying people are going too fast in this county. And I refer them to the sheriff's department, because if I, if I had my way, they'd have a triple, quadruple the, the number of officers out there, and I tell them write tickets, so you can generate the revenue, slow people down in this, in this area. But that's not the policy of the sheriff. So you'd need to take that with the sheriff. We certainly, if there's issues out there, we can have the sheriff come out and do some radar checks and, uh, some presence out there during the construction.
Will, will construction cause either one of these intersections to be closed down completely?
Our, our plan is to keep one, a minimum of one lane open in each direction during the whole time during the construction. And that, that's why the construction's a little longer, is if you could close the whole intersection, you could probably knock it out in six months. But by keeping a lane opening, you gotta build different parts at different times. That makes an issue. I guess the, one thing I also like you to, like to do, Tyler touched on is, is streetlights. We're at a point where we'd like to design the street lighting for this intersection. So we'd like the decision from the board, whether you want the county to install our own streetlights out there and maintain those, and they would be our county, our standard county fixtures. We're willing to do, light, light that, that area up what's required by a, a roundabout at our cost and pay for that cost ongoing. If you'd like your lights out there and tied into your system, we're willing to do that also. But then those lights will be turned over to you for maintenance and, and, um, power and so forth.
So if we do the upgrade, they're ours?
They're yours, yeah.
Kind of like a perfect quick group call. Yeah, I just said, ru- really quick. Uh, so it sounds like, um, the appetite for roundabouts, uh, is definitely increasing in the county. Is, is that accurate? Are you trying to trend more towards roundabouts when it's applicable, now that you've gained a little experience, or?
It, it's more when it's applicable. Uh, we've got a lot of six-lane roads, and six-lane roads, in my opinion, I came from Wisconsin, we have hundreds of roundabouts in Wisconsin. Six-lane roads are not where you wanna put a roundabout. They're just too confusing for people and too many movements and too much traffic to get through them. Uh, if everybody knew how to drive and drive perfect, it'd work, but we don't have, it's not a perfect situation. So six-lane, we, we, we're not even thinking-
So we're applicable, it's that, now that roundabouts are part of the conversation, or maybe it has not been in the past?
Right. It is, we looked at this as your, it's pretty well built out. You've got some industrial growth, job growth. There's still some, uh, more growth to the, to the west, in the city of Fort Myers, that they're still building homes. But this is a, you, looking at those projections, this roundabout's gonna continue to work, function well, well, well past the twenty years.
What is the acreage that we're looking at, uh, east of, uh, on East Commerce that we currently own, that you're looking at, at, at taking this within the construction zone? What are we talking about acreage?
Is there a sketch legal yet?
Uh, well, I mean, we have an Altis survey that was delivered to us from WCI when the road conveyance was done, but ballpark?
I mean, does the county have a sketch legal of what they wanna utilize, either by agreement or compensation or easement or acquisition?
We're looking for the board to tell us what direction we should go, what paths we should go down. So we know, are you gonna permit it, just keep the property, maintain in the future? That's one option. Then we don't need anything. We just, you just give us a construction easy, and we say four hundred feet or three hundred feet, whatever that distance is, to the, to the east of our right-of-way line is our permanent area to work. You can give us an easement, then we do a sketch and description of the area that we're gonna maintain, which is back the black road and the sidewalks and so forth in that area, and we give you a sketch description on that. If you want us to take over the whole thing, then we would do work with Tyler, get a sketch and description of what you took over and bring that forward. So we're looking for the board.
Yeah, and from the board's perspective, if the board enters into doing a BIM, allows them to construct it on the district property, or enters into grants an easement, the district still could be named in any litigation for any accidents that occur in the roundabout in Commerce Lakes Drive. Because if we're the underlying fee owner, they have the easement, or if we're the underlying fee owner, and it's a road that's constructed, whether or not they maintain the road, if any accident occurs on the roundabout in Commerce Lakes, we would be named as a party, just from a standpoint of, that's why at times acquisition is sometimes better for legal respect.
If we, uh, if we were to decide to turn the road over to you, it's yours, can we then maybe get upgraded signs and lights from the county?
Are the, is that section lit now? I don't, I don't-
Yes, it's lit now.
It's lit? So you'd want us to replace your sign, your lights with our, our lights?
No, I'm wanting for our lights to go up. If we're gonna turn over the roadway to you.
Basically, what we have right now is, when we did the twenty seventeen deal, we kept the landscaping, streetlights, street signs all for the upgrade, which is try and keep Gateway standard with anything. Uh, along that line is, is that where I've got a little bit of a problem, is if we go out there and we would do some type of fee symbol or arrangement to give you that dedicated portion of which we own, which is up to roughly, uh, Danham's Reserve, we still have another two thousand, twenty-five hundred feet that goes on, that's currently under a P O A that doesn't exist. That road, all of a sudden, gets in no man's land. What do we do?
Are you talking about Commerce Lakes Drive here, or?
Yes, Commerce Lakes Drive east.
All the way, all the way to Daniels?
All the way to Daniels, yes.
Um, you know, I, I, I don't know.
Could put you in a bad spot there.
It put me in a spot where I really don't know the facts on that. Uh, talked to my boss for any search. He said, you know, we'd like to take over at least the piece that's, we're gonna build on. Tyler indicated that you owned another four, five hundred feet or so to the east of that. We said, well, we certainly would, we, we'd take that over too, so you don't, you're not left with a little segment to maintain, and then we would, we would take care of that. Anything further to the east of that, I, I really can't answer, I can't give you a comment on. I can, I can take it back, and we can talk about it. Uh, so that, that's gonna be made probably by my boss or someone higher, that whether we're gonna take it over. If you don't own it, I don't think you can convey it to us.
The unfortunate thing is it's owned by a defunct P O A.
Is it own, is it the same ownership that has the piece on Griffin, or is that a different?
No, it's a different, different P O A.
And that same issue is going to come up in just a few minutes again.
Yeah, so, uh, we're looking at that, and we probably look at some, we're, we're looking at how to address that piece. That's a year off, so our goal is, we're really concentrating on this one, so we can get it done and get it built, uh, for you, and get a safe, safe intersection at this one. We've got another year to work out the right-of-way issues on Griffin.
But going back to that, you, you just hit the magic words there. I would think that somebody would want us in and out of the way before you let this thing out for, uh, start construction, which means that we gotta get this deal resolved, because we gotta do construction work out there.
Well, that's where Tyler touched on a joint, joint project agreement, where you do the design, we insert that into our plans. We built, we bid it out with it.
Do add it.
And then Gateway agrees, in that agreement, agrees to reimburse the county for the cost of the utility adjustments and, and relocations or whatever that comes out to.
So the utility work would be done by your prime contractor?
That way, it's, 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 it's seamless.
I mean, it sounds like what the county is asking for, and that's ultimately a board decision, that the land be donated to the county as opposed to any compensation or trade-off or reduction in the amount the district pays for the utility relocation. It's, that sounds like what they're asking.
And I would agree with that. I was just, that's why I was trying to maybe get something in exchange other than a roundabout.
Yeah, it's not unusual where C D Ds have properties that are acquired by local governments, and that local government pays for that acquisition. That's happened in many counties.
I'm just thinking, you know-
We're not, we're not interested in paying for that right-of-way. We'd be glad to get an easement or a permit to do the work. Uh, but we are willing to take it over since it is, we look at that as a liability. Uh, and we're, we're certainly not, we don't have money for budgeting for, uh, land acquisition on that.
Do we have a dollar estimate of, uh, dollar estimate of what the construction cost relocation is, or encasement, or both?
Uh, it depends on a lot of particulars that we need to work out with the county still, like we talked about earlier. We're not sure the extent of what has to be encased just yet, uh, because like we said earlier, there are a lot of fittings that are in there that we're really not sure how, how the county would like for us to dress right now. Uh, so, so far, here's what we've done. Uh, we and Cardno have taken a look at, Cardno's the engineer at the, retained by the county for the roadway design. We've looked at what facilities are out there. Uh, all of that has been laid over the design plans that they have, so we know what's going under future pavement, or what's going to end up under a future pavement. Um, so the next step is to see exactly what the plan is to do under all of that stuff that's going to end up under future pavement. Um, and we're, we're just not at that point yet. I mean, ballpark figure, you're in six figures for sure, uh, but I can't give you a more detailed estimate than that right now.
There's, there's a lot of existing utilities under existing pavement. Let me just-
I agree completely, too.
Just, just, just the roundabout slightly increased the area of, of existing utilities under pavement.
I am very glad you said that, because, uh, one of the things we're gonna look at is, you know, hey, listen, we already have, uh, a large section of utility that's under existing pavement that's not encased. So our, I don't know what the plan is. Is the plan, now we're gonna go encase all of that, or are we just gonna encase the additional twenty feet? I, I don't know what we're gonna do yet.
It also depends on the material of the lines that you have on, right?
Right, so-
Condition, yeah.
There's a, there's a lot of details to work out still, is what we're getting at here.
They'd throw in the other one, uh, the, the real wild one in the room, drainage. You guys are doing the drainage?
We're, we're tying into the existing system.
Yeah, we're not really increasing-
The South Florida Water Management Permit?
That's, that, but I'm saying, that's not on us. That, that's part of your-
Oh, the drainage is tied into it, yes.
Tied into your construction.
Yeah, we're, we're taking care of all the storm sewer systems in there, make, make the, the roundabout work at our cost.
Because a lot of that out there, especially in that northeast quadrant, is all gray swales. There's not much pipe.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a mess right now.
So I'm sure you're gonna have Tyler take a look at it and set you the plans of the storm sewer plan.
Yeah, I'd like to see some places, storm sewers, very involved in that.
That, that's part of our project costs, so we're, it's a hundred percent ours.
So it sounds like there's still more information to be gathered and something brought back to the board?
Yes, ma'am. So I, I guess the, what I think the county is looking for today is, um, certainly a decision or at least some direction on street lighting for sure, because that's kind of a big direction change on how they're gonna go. If they're gonna go with, uh, the Gateway standard lighting or with theirs, right?
The spacing changes because it's a different luminar. So, uh, you're gonna need more poles, because yours doesn't light up as much area as our standard county.
But we do have a, a, a lighting plan, or at least, you know, a backbone of a lighting plan that will start to transition as well from what we have today to LED, more efficient, uh, lighting. So if we're gonna do that, I think we would, you know, regardless-
We're basically using the existing poles, the existing boxes, and just putting in different lens to go to LED.
Okay.
We did about twenty-eight of them on Griffin.
Okay.
So it, it's a little bit different along Gateway, because we have, they're, they're taller, and they have the, uh, double boxes on, on the poles. But I think we would like to stay, or at least my thought is, uh, just to have continuity. I don't wanna come down Gateway Boulevard, have our lights, then go into this deal with a totally different lighting plan, and then go back out, pick up ours again. Somebody's gonna ask if we're nuts.
Okay, well, if you guys could make it, decide on that soon. I don't need an answer today. The sooner the better, because we're, we've probably got our lighting design done about fifty percent, so now we'd have to scrap that and, and search yours.
I'd like to get a dollar figure on what we're talking about.
Well, and we know what the county standard is, right? It's still the same, would be the same standard that we've looked at in the past as far as the, the decorative, well, I don't know if I can call it decorative.
I would, I would not decorate.
But it's, it's, it's basically county standard.
If yours is minimalist art, it's-
It's thirty, about thirty-five foot poles on an arm and, and a fixture.
Aluminum, standard poles with the overhead sticking out off the end.
And basically what, uh, I, I guess what I'm still not clear on is, if, if we go with our standard, um, do we, you know, how much do we absorb, at least in the, uh, in the upfront cost? Is that a shared cost? Is there, you know, some credit?
We pick it up.
Well, we're, we're willing, at least to throw in what our cost would be.
Well, we would, we would, yeah.
Definitely, definitely.
That's what I wanted to say. So if we upgrade, we pay for the upgrade, and then, uh, ongoing maintenance.
And if you're looking at turning over the road, I mean, that's something we can put into that agreement, that we would install those lights. You would maintain them in the future, or we'll maintain your fixtures, it's whatever you tell us that you want. It would actually be the LED lights.
Mr. Banks?
Have you taken into consideration that we have a senior high school under construction here in Gateway?
Yes, we have.
And have you made any kind of special accommodations in your thinking for that?
Well, we've put that into our traffic projection models, and modeled them for those peak times when the schools letting out and letting in. The main, the main thing is, that would be more, mostly would affect the Griffin roundabout, because this high school's on Griffin. And, uh, the school board has told us that eighty percent of the students will be coming from Lee High and twenty percent from Gateway and other areas. So, uh, the, the impact to Gateway and Griffin and Commerce is minimal, but we have put those into our projections, so we have looked at it.
I'm delighted to hear that. Thank you.
I guess this is a good time to bring up that there's actually a third roundabout going in at the interest of the school also.
Yeah.
You don't even start that. Uh, can we, can we jump to, can we jump to Griffin? Because that is, that, that's got an issue, and we're gonna solve one, we might as well solve the both. Can we go to the Griffin picture?
What is this?
This is in Griffin.
Before we, before we go to Griffin, let me just make sure no one else had any other questions on Commerce Lakes. Do you want to? Okay, go ahead.
Issue on Griffin is, we just talked about, is that area to the, uh, to the west in Fairway Lakes Office Park. Uh, we don't own, you don't own, nobody owns, because it's in a defunct P O A. Uh, when the fire station came, uh, and talked to us, their thought was, uh, they wanted a ingress on the south side of the, uh, roundabout such that they could go in and then up through their facility and then exit onto this Fairway Lakes road. And I'm looking at the geometrics there, and both of those look like to me, and going out there in the field and trying to walk off where I thought it would be, there are so many trees and other obstacles in there. I, I don't know how they're going to do it. Has there been any discussion with you guys on that Fairway Lakes side to change any of that, to be able to accommodate their, their trucks?
We've, we've met with the fire department, and their preliminary, uh, this is all we have right now, because we basically stopped designing on, on the, uh, Griffin roundabouts, so we can concentrate on the Commerce and get that done. Like, we've got another year of design, so we've got extra time to get this one done. We met with the fire department. They requested an equipment only, not for personnel, anybody else. It'd be just for their equipment in on, uh, Gateway. So we're gonna look at that and try to push a little right turn lane, uh, right as you get out of the roundabout for their equipment.
That's what I thought you'd do, yeah.
And the main entrance will be on the- And the main entrance will be on the Fairway Road, which will be a two-way connection. It'll be as far, as far to the west as we can get with their current property. They are looking at, I guess, purchasing the next property down. So we're gonna work out the, work with the fire department on where that driveway is. So when we get to the sixty percent plans, you're gonna be able to see, you'll see that and their exit, or their entrance exit on Fairway.
Okay, the, the other one appearing for the community is the, what's this going to look like relative to the canopy and the trees? And I've been pretty much telling everybody, and I wanted to get it confirmed, that essentially where we see that, what we call construction zone, like at this Griffin intersection, the end of that white median on the south and the end of that white median on the north, everything between those two white medians is gone.
That's correct. The white is, would be too narrow for a planting area. As we get closer to the design, we'll, we'll look, take a look at that.
So we can have, we can have, let's see, two, one fifty, we can have six, seven hundred feet on both of these intersections going both directions with no trees?
Uh, that's probably wrong. I would say you're looking at about two hundred feet in each direction.
Not, not counting the roundabout?
Yes, it's probably about a hundred, two hundred and fifty feet from the white to the end of the white, and each of those mediums.
I couldn't tell what the score was.
So, and we, we, when we looked at also the, we did look at, when we looked at the signal, we looked at the turn lanes and-